Thank you very much indeed. This evening is my final visit and I'd like, if I may please, to express the thanks for the privilege of serving you in this way. As we come to the end of one mayoral year and the start of the next, we're conscious of change and transition, of challenge and opportunity, of potential and possibility. In the world of politics, economics and government, there's much uncertainty and an apparent desire for continuity, security and building on firm foundations. I'm just back from a short pilgrimage to Greece and a week ago, I was visiting Philippi to see Christians who lived there. The apostle wrote these words: "Only live your life in a manner worthy of the gospel of Christ, so that whether I come and see you or am absent and hear about you, I will know that you're standing firm in one spirit, striving side by side with one mind." Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the world you've made and for our part in its turning day by day. We pray for those in authority, for justice, truth and integrity in all their dealings, and for your plan and purpose to be made known in us and through us in our deliberation and decision. We remember those who are in special need in the health service and education, those who have no work, those who have no home and those for whom family and relationship are a daily struggle. Please help each of us in our small corner of your world to be encouraged in making differences, to be confident in making changes and to be hopeful always in making plans for a better future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Gather up our prayers together in the words that Jesus himself taught us as we say together: "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Thou dost not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever."
Now David, I do understand that you have to leave. But I just wanted to say a huge, huge thank you for all the spiritual guidance you have afforded us over the years, over the year. And it was a very special year and I particularly wish to thank you for leading not only in the civic service but in the wonderful remembrance services that we had across in Farnham but also of course all the other wonderful ones that we had across the borough. So I'm going to come down here just to present you with this very, very small token of our appreciation. Would everyone please join me in thanking David. Thank you very, very much. David is now free to leave. You are welcome to stay of course if you'd like to. So, the first item on the agenda is the election of the new mayor. And I'm calling now for nominations for the election of mayor for the council year 2019-2020. Do we have someone to move? Carol, councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It gives me enormous pleasure to propose councillor Mary Forieszewski to be the mayor of our borough for the year coming, the coming year. It's many years since I first heard those dulcet tones from across this council chamber and I have never wavered Mary from my initial belief that I was listening to a very special councillor. However, I do think in this spirit of openness and transparency which we're all urged to indulge in, councillor Forieszewski, you and I should perhaps confess that we are not only long-term friends but we are also devoted followers of CCT. When it seems that the world has gone completely mad, very often at the end of a joint planning committee meeting, at which we have just spent an hour and a half discussing sewage, Mary will whisper "CCT" and we immediately fix up a session. We've changed venues in the past to maintain an element of secrecy but tonight Mary will come clean. CCT, or to give it its correct medical term, coffee and cake therapy, works every time if you share the session with councillor Forieszewski. Two mouthfuls of Victoria sponge, five minutes of Mary wisdom and the world immediately seems whole and sweeter smelling. Councillor Forieszewski has of course one of the simplest first names to spell and to say and one of the hardest surnames with which to do the same. Thankfully for all of us, the letters which spell out Forieszewski are the perfect mnemonic to remember the attributes for a good borough mayor. So at the end of this speech, we'll all be able to spell councillor Forieszewski even if the correct pronunciation still eludes us. But I'm sure councillor Isherwood will help with, he's got like 25 varieties of Forieszewski so he's your man for a pronunciation of surnames. Madam Mayor will be a lot simpler for all of us. So we're going to start with F obviously. F for fun and friendliness. Nobody needs or deserves a miserable mayor. Mary's delightful sense of humour will brighten every room she enters. With Mary in the role, everyone will be smiling after a visit from the mayor of Waverley and looking forward to the next one. O is of course for oratory. A good mayor shows respect to the organisations they're visiting by preparing an appropriate speech. However, fine words are not always enough and true oratory demands passion. I think we can safely say that Mary will speak from the heart and make those she's addressing feel extra special. Never been short of passion have we, Mary? I'm going to combine the R and the Y because the qualities are closely related. A mayor has to be slightly rebellious if she is to bring out the best in the people she visits and she must also remain young at heart to ensure that she reaches out to the core of the lonely or the bewildered. She may be looking at an elderly lady in a care home or a frail gentleman slowed down by a devastating illness but inside that creaking body is the young rebel with a lifetime of experience. Mary's natural rapport with rebels of all ages will soon elicit the fact that Joan, dressed soberly now in a pleated skirt and a twin set, was once an exotic dancer with a folie bejaise. And Eric, once held the record for rolling down a Yorkshire hillside in a barrel dressed as a stick of rhubarb. A good mayor knows that everybody has a story to tell and will enjoy listening to every single one of them. S is for smart. Mary is smart in every sense of the word. She's one of those annoying people who would look elegant in a bin liner. A good mayor will always dress for the occasion of course but it does help if she is smart enough to detect a slight problem on the day. A few well-chosen words will diffuse the tension over the missing rock cakes, the chipped teapot, the forgotten butter or the slightly burnt scones as we Scots say. Mary will find these words instantly and she will concentrate and focus on what is truly important. Z of course is for zestful. The Waverley mayor will sometimes have five or six functions in one day and I'm confident that Mary will have the energy to approach the last organisation with the same enthusiasm and attentiveness which she gave to the first. E is for empathy. I touched on this earlier. A good mayor understands that she is the least important person in the room. Mary will listen and understand instinctively whether she needs to hold someone's hand, put an arm around another's shoulders. She has the empathy and humility to enrich the life of an individual or boost the morale of an organisation. And is there any part of the mayoral role that's more important than that? I've touched on Mary's wisdom earlier over the Victoria sponge so this W is for something very practical: walking shoes and wellies. A mayor may be asked to unveil a statue. What might be not so clear from the paperwork is that the statue is across a bog and up a steep hill. Mary's practical and down-to-earth character will ensure that she is well-prepared, as well-prepared I should say, as all the scouts, guides, cubs and brownies that she will inevitably meet throughout the year. S and K stand for selflessness and kindness, qualities which Mary has in spades. I don't know what lurks in the boot of all your cars. Mine's usually got a litter picker, a child's booster seat, something that's supposed to have gone to the dump two or three weeks ago. Mary's usually contains an enormous dog. Enormous is, I'm not exaggerating here, the biggest dogs you've ever seen. Because for those of you who don't know it, Mary runs a highly successful business centred around the wellbeing of dogs. But she's one of those rare people who exudes equal love for all God's creatures, whatever number of legs they possess. She is truly, I'm not just saying this, one of the kindest people I know. And as all good mayors do, she will always go that extra mile and she will spread a feeling of well-being across the borough. Dogs and people alike will benefit from your year as mayor, Mary. Which brings us to the final letter, I. That's for integrity. It's for lots of things as well, independence, but I think integrity because I think it is the most important quality of any mayor. Mary is integrity personified and will represent all that is good about the lovely borough we all serve and she'll do it without fear or favour. After such a successful year as deputy mayor, councillor Forieszewski needs little advice from me but I shall finish on a fact and a warning. It's very difficult for a lady mayor to attend five events in one day with no time to get home to change. I can see one or two past mayors nodding away to that, it is very difficult being a lady sometimes, but the answer is always black trousers and a variety of shoes and tops. They will take you seamlessly from the under-tennes football tournament first thing in the morning, through the shop opening, the lunchtime reception, the art exhibition, right through to the gala performance of La Traviata in the evening. What a difference high heels and a few sequins make. And the warning relates to flowery hats, Mary. If you have to attend a cremation followed by a garden party, a sober outfit and an extravagant hat might seem to be the obvious solution. However, if your hat is festooned with flowers, please don't entrust it to the young funeral director. As the coffin makes its way into the crematorium with your hat artistically presented with the other floral tributes, believe me, there is no dignified way to retrieve it. Councillors, our colleague councillor Mary Forieszewski obviously has all the necessary qualities to be an exemplary mayor. After all, they're spelt out in her surname of which she is justly proud and I have absolutely no hesitation in proposing that councillor Mary Forieszewski be the borough mayor to represent our borough for the year 2019 to 2020.
Madam Mayor and distinguished guests, I'm really not sure how to follow that. Don't think there's really anything you can do at this point. I think I'd probably just start out by saying that I've only known councillor Forieszewski for a fraction of the time Carol Coburn has but I've spent a very significant portion of that time trying to remember how to pronounce your name properly too. I think I might be nearly there right now. I'm not going to speak for very long but I just wanted to say that I'm going to try and do the slightly more serious version. On occasions like this, all of us, even the more partisan among us, should take a moment to remember that there's actually one thing that every member of this council has in common. We've all stood up, we've all entered and emerged relatively unscathed through the crucible of elections to represent our communities and to represent our residents. That's not an easy thing to do and it's increasingly that we do that in an environment that seeks to emphasise the things that separate us rather than the things that bring us together. One of the things that can bring us together in Waverley is the office of the mayor. But to once again stand up, to take the responsibility and the duty of the office of mayor is an extra step that should be acknowledged, applauded and supported, whichever rosette you wore two weeks ago. Mary, you and I have not seen eye to eye on everything in that last two years although between us, we might have agreed on more things than I think some of our colleagues might have liked. But I know for certain in that your mayoral year, with the borough as your ward, you will represent us with dignity, honour, dedication to duty as befits the office. Madam Mayor, it is my great honour and pleasure to second the nomination of councillor Mary Forieszewski to be the next mayor of Waverley. Thank you.
Oh sorry, I have to ask, are there any other nominations? If not, then it gives me great pleasure to bring this to a vote. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Well therefore I hereby declare councillor Mary Forieszewski as the new mayor of Waverley.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber. There will now be a short break whilst the mayor robes. Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please rise to receive the new mayor of Waverley, councillor Mary Forieszewski.
It's me. I forgot the glasses. I want to start as I mean to go on. And I couldn't pretend, I couldn't go through the next 40 minutes going... I'm okay, honestly, honestly. But you can take a moment to admire the shoes. There's always something I was going to forget. They said break the ice. The youngest. The oldest. How many mentors it takes to get a woman's handbag? I, Mary Forieszewski, having been elected to the office of mayor of the borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take the office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as the of conduct which is expected of members of Waverley council in performance of my function in that office. Members, this next item is my acceptance speech. Can I just start by saying a massive, massive thank you to my dear, wonderful, long-term mentor, Carol Coburn. I mean, how often do you find me speechless but I'm utterly speechless, honestly? And to Paul Vallow, I think you being my seconda proves that the way forward is for us to all work together and thank you, I think it does show a degree of unity. I'm going to keep sipping water because the nerves are going to kick in. Like Carol said, I'm... Like Carol said, I'm very much for one, for speaking from the heart, so I don't really want to... So I've got my notes in front of me. May I stand? Yes, so first off, I would like to thank my pre-pension seconda, beautiful words, means an awful lot, I feel very humble and very privileged to be standing here this evening. I'd also like to thank my family and friends for being here this evening. There's so many of you in this room, I can't believe it, I don't know who's on my side and who's on someone else's side, but it's just wonderful to see so many here this evening. I was first elected to Haysmere Town Council in 1999, and looking back across the room tonight, there's so many familiar faces, Jackie Keane, John Robiney, Melanie O'Dell, Brian Howard, there's so many of you that brings back wonderful memories. In that twenty years, I've seen a tremendous amount of changes, and to give you an idea, in that twenty years, I've watched both my wonderful sons grow up, go to comprehensive school, go to college, go to uni, and finally leave home. I've lost both my parents in that time as well, I've moved house, I've changed my job, and I lost, and as Carol alluded to, I have a passion for animals, German shepherds in particular, and I've loved and lost four beautiful German shepherds, all in the period of twenty years. But there has been one constant in all of that, and that is my dear husband Stefan. He's my best kept secret, so you get people saying, are you married? Whereabouts are you? I don't know how long, thirty odd, thirty-four, thirty-five years. I'm sure you found it as good as everyone else has, knowing me. You know, life's going to get even better now that you're going to see less of me, but you know, I love you with all my heart and my family, and thank you for sticking through thick or thin. My name's been mentioned several times, I very often get asked to spell it, and it's really quite simple, M-A-R-Y. It's very simple. But in actual fact, many years ago, it was suggested to me that I change my surname, because if I wanted to do well in local government, perhaps a change in my name would help me. So I did, I was formerly called Smith. Yeah, what else would I like to say? What I would like to do is, I would like to take this opportunity to say that we are now a diverse, dynamic, different, changing council. We have over thirty new members, one of the difficulties I have is standing and looking across the room and thinking, I don't recognise anyone, apart from a few, and you're not sitting here, Gerry, why are you not over here? And you and I are going to get on famously, Gerry. But what I did want to say is, it's really time to embrace that change, and it's really time to work together, and it's really time to look at what the electorate said, and they said they wanted change, and we've got it. We've all got one common goal, and I think it's already been touched on, and that is that we want to provide and continue to provide services to our residents across the borough and our communities, so I think it's really important. So I very much welcome the new administration, the new council, and working with you, and I think Paul Fellows very eloquently acknowledged a good forward way of nominating second in me, and I thank you for that. As already been said, I've been deputy mayor for a year, and I've had the most wonderful time, I really have. I've done and seen things that have been, it's a real privilege, it's been a real treat. What I never failed to be utterly impressed with is, we are underpinned by the value of good people doing amazing things in incredible situations, and as a society in Waverley, as a borough, we are underpinned by the voluntary sector, and I don't think we should ever lose sight of the hard work that goes on out there that we have no idea about. You've really got to be in the position that I'm in, or previous mayors have been in, to really acknowledge that really, really good, strong spirit that's out there. Congratulations to all of you for winning your seats. Winning doesn't mean that it's just stopped, it means you've just started, so welcome to your next, your second tour for the next four years. It's going to be fun. Right, I'm just going to, I'm going to wind up very soon because we've got an evening to get through, but I just wanted to point out that we've got a lot to look forward to, we've got a lot of change, there's going to be a lot of challenges, but working together is what makes it work. I would actually like to extend a tribute, thank you, to Julia Potts, because like Carol Coburn said, I was that gobby Birmingham girl, sat over there, throwing a wobbler, getting my toys, throwing them further than anyone else, pulling a strop, moaning, groaning, officers pulling their hair out, she's at it again, she's at it again. And sometimes all we want is a chance, and you gave me that chance by having a bit of faith and a bit of trust, and you gave me opportunities to sit on different committees and really discover myself, so thank you, it's a debt of gratitude, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that chance you gave me. So we've all got a chance now, we've got a chance to make a difference, we've got a chance to go forward, and we've got a chance to work together, and I think our residents will appreciate that. I would also like to extend my most grateful thanks to our staff. I mean, this is Mr Modest here, he's seen me through some real thick times, good times, bad times, rollercoaster of emotions, and the staff in general, we should be very proud of the team you have here at Waverley, and I hope to work very closely with that team as well. I'd also like to thank Denise, you gave me plenty of opportunities to, this being a platform for me to, in readiness for this evening. So all I can say on one final note is, I am utterly, utterly delighted, I cannot wait. I've got an outfit for every occasion. If anyone starts playing up, I'll bring one of the German shepherds with me. But I am truly honoured, privileged, delighted, and when I stop pinching myself and asking myself, how did I get here, I might just come down off cloud nine and go, I'm the Mayor of Waverley Borough Council. Next item, are there any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have received apologies from councillors Brian Adams, Martin Darcy, Jan Floyd Douglas, John Gray, Christine Howard, Robert Knowles, Peter Nicholson, and Kika Miriles.
Thank you. Item number four, it gives me great pleasure to call for nominations for the appointment of deputy mayor. Do we have, oh, councillor Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really pleased to rise and propose that councillor Dr Penelope Marriott, you're not the only one with a long name, be elected as our deputy mayor. I've known councillor Penny, as I'll call her, because we have the advantage of two Drs P Marriott's on the council, for many, many years, long before I came into local politics. I think I possibly first met her at the Farnham-Venison dinner, when we were both enjoying ourselves lunching, or no, dining on the local deer, or perhaps during one of her many volunteering roles, in which she is very prevalent and very well-known in Farnham. However, it may have been at Alden College, where she was lecturing when my daughter was deciding where to do her further education, or it could be at a meeting of the Farnham- and Denak Friendship Association, which she now chairs, because this lady gets around a bit. Penny has previously served on this council, and is a past Mayor of Farnham, both of which will stand her in good stead as deputy, and we hope in future, as mayor of this borough. She's lived in Farnham for over forty years, and is very focused on the needs of the town and the borough. Her long-term association with Andenach, Farnham's twin town in Germany, will I'm sure be of benefit in the borough's relationship with its twin of Mayen Koblenz. She is friendly, helpful, industrious, and extremely intelligent, so watch out. But anyone with a PhD in astrophysics certainly has to be quite bright. I gather that during her study, she became an acknowledged expert on hot gases and their expansion, which may mean she'll be able to deal with the hot air in this chamber without any problems whatsoever. I'm convinced that as deputy mayor, she'll make us very proud, and I have no hesitation in proposing councillor Penny Marriott for that job.
Thank you. Can I call upon a seconda, please? Councillor McLeod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to second councillor Ward's proposal that councillor Penny Marriott should be appointed as deputy mayor. I also wish to take the opportunity to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, on your appointment. It's a high honour to be appointed as Mayor of Waverley, and as councillor Coburn said, it takes a special person to do the job and do it really well. I've known you, Madam Mayor, for quite a few years, even back before I became a councillor, and I know that you have the qualities and abilities to match the record of achievement of the very best of the previous mayors, many of whom are present with us this evening. I don't actually need to wish you success, as I know you will be successful. Penny, of course, is another special person who will do an outstanding job as deputy mayor. John Ward has already covered her record of high achievement in her life to date, so I will cover another area, in that she's a dedicated mother and grandmother with four children and nine grandchildren. By quite amazing coincidence, this is exactly the same as me, would you believe it? I can't claim to match Penny's high achievements elsewhere, but at least I thought I could claim to match her in the production of children and grandchildren. However, if you think about it for just a few seconds, that falls down, as a man's contributions to the production of children is pretty minor compared to women's, and takes very little of his time in most cases. Talking of women, and why not, if Penny is confirmed, for the second year running, both the mayor and the deputy mayor will be women. This must be a bit frightening for any man sitting quietly in this chamber, thinking, I'd rather fancy that job in the future. After seeing three such talented and formidable women in action, perhaps we're heading for a new tradition, where the mayor and the deputy mayor will always be women rather than men. How about that? Waverley is becoming a really modern and up-to-date council. So finally, Madam Mayor, I would fully support John Ward in highly recommending Penny Marriott to my fellow councillors as deputy mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? You sure? Is that agreed? Excellent, thank you. I will now invest the new deputy mayor, the deputy mayor's consort, and one or two others in front of the dais. Right, Stefan. The moment you've been waiting for. All these years, wanting a piece of bling, well now you've got it. Stefan, what's for dinner tonight? Denise. What can I say? You've been a great ambassador, a great leader, a great mayor, and I can't open the box. There we go. And again, I thank you, because you gave me the opportunity to do so many occasions, and trusted me to do it, and I hope I've done you proud, because I think you've done us proud, so very well done. A small gift.
Thank you very much.
You're very, very welcome. Penny. Polly.
It's been a pleasure, you were great out there, it was lovely, so on our behalf, please accept that.
Thank you.
Right. I now ask the deputy mayor to make her declaration of acceptance of office.
I, Penny Marriott, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor for the Borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself, and I will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Waverley Borough Council in the performance of my functions in that office. Couldn't remember the date.
Thank you. We now come to the vote of thanks for the retiring mayor, which is going to be moved by councillor Julia Potts, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and may I first of all offer my congratulations, it's really great to see you taking the office of our new mayor, so really well done and really congratulations to you. And yes, I'm delighted to propose the vote of thanks to Denise Legal, our outgoing mayor, and what a year it has been since she was elected as mayor of Waverley. For once, I'm going to keep my speech fairly brief, and that will then allow councillor Peter Martin to speak. And boy, can he speak. But on a serious note, I just wanted to say an enormous thank you to you. You've been a fantastic mayor and an outstanding ambassador for our borough and the office, the all-important office of mayor. It's been a really interesting year, and there've been a number of highlights throughout the year, but I think a few that really stick with me, and I'm sure with other councillors who were in attendance, and officers as well, was the incredible day at the dedication of the war memorial at Milford Cemetery, that was amazing, and to see the armed forces from around the world, but especially British and Canadian forces together, and the work that went into that. forces together, and the work that went into that was fantastic. I think another of the real highlights for me, and I think it marks and really epitomises what the mayoral team and what the mayoral year was about, was an evening in Farnham. And it was another successful visit from the landrat and we decided to take, and I was one of those who accompanied the mayor, and we took them to a Thai restaurant in Farnham called The Giggling Squid. Nothing to do with the fact that Denise and I love the giggling squid. And we had a very interesting evening trying to interpret the Thai menu to the German landrat, who didn't really understand what we were talking about, and I think he found, to put it politely, the food interesting. But we salvaged the evening by taking a little wander up some side streets to a very quiet pub, and for those of you who know Farnham well, we got to the Hot Blossom, just as they were calling last orders, and we certainly livened up what was and had been a quiet evening in the middle of the week in the Hot Blossom in Farnham. But joking apart, it's been a great year and that's what's been great to see, Denise. We've seen professionalism, we've seen humility, and we've seen a great sense of humour, and all conveyed in keeping with the occasion. So an enormous thank you to you on behalf of all of us here, and a great thank you to Polly, who's been a really amazing consort. Thank you, Polly. Denise will miss you here in the council chamber. Enjoy the break and, as for many of us, new beginnings. Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, gives me great pleasure to propose this vote of thanks to Denise Legal.
This will now be seconded by, I believe, councillor Peter Martin.
Well, bespectacled, Madam Mayor, could I also be amongst those first people to congratulate you on becoming the mayor of Waverley and could I wish you and Stephane a wonderful year, and I'm sure it will be a wonderful year, and good luck to you both. Now, Madam Mayor, I'm really quite delighted to second this vote of thanks to Denise Legal, our outgoing mayor, and of course I will be brief. It doesn't seem like a year since I was seconding the very proposition that she should be elected as the mayor of Waverley, and it gives me some considerable satisfaction to, so to speak, bookend her significant year in office. And of course, a lot has happened in the last year since then. Without doubt, in my view, Denise has been a hugely successful mayor. Rightly, she selected the Army Benevolent Fund as her chosen charity, and I'm delighted to be wearing the tie of the Army Benevolent Fund this evening, as is our chief executive and as is Maurice Byham, who was the Armed Forces Champion of this council. And by the way, Madam Mayor, we need to appoint a new Armed Forces Champion of this council and a very important office it is too. But how right she was in the year commemorating the 100th anniversary of the end of the First World War to choose the Army Benevolent Fund. She represented the borough with distinction at so many commemoration events, and like councillor Potts, one that sticks in my mind was the dedication of the memorial to the Canadian forces of both the First and Second World Wars. The beautiful stone memorial deeply embedded in the earth at the Milford Cemetery and so close to the Canadian forces' training grounds in Whitley will surely stand for a thousand years and remind us all of the vital contribution of the Armed Forces of Denise's country of birth in those dreadful conflicts. And again, I've picked out another event which councillor Potts picked out. Isn't it extraordinary we should pick out the same two events? I'm delighted to have joined Denise and her wonderful consort Polly on other occasions too, and I also have these vivid memories of joining her for the event with the mayor of Mayenne Coblenz, and it was a lovely event, introducing our German guests at the end of a long evening to the novelty of warm English beer on a hot summer's evening, and I'm not entirely sure that they were convinced it was a really good idea. Last year, Madam Mayor, I drew members' attention to Denise's unique geographical skills, or more precisely, the lack of them. Her ability to get lost when driving from A to B is simply legendary. She has at least in part overcome this unique gap in her otherwise truly impressive skillset. Like so many mayors that have gone before or will come in the future, she has not only gained a comprehensive knowledge of the geography of the borough, but has found out more about its voluntary bodies, its volunteers, its schools, its institutions, its churches and its partners. And she now has a hugely improved understanding of how this borough works and what makes this borough into the vibrant and wonderful place that it is in which to live, to work and to play. Sadly, Madam Mayor, Denise Legal is no longer a councillor. Her politics is a hard and sometimes harsh master. But I'm sure, indeed, I know that we can all here in this chamber join in expressing our thanks to our outgoing mayor Legal on a job truly well done. And may she in mayoral retirement enjoy and relax in all of that wonderful free time that she will now have, standing firm in the way that your chaplain admonished us all to be in his prayers tonight. So, Madam Mayor, it gives me very great pleasure to second this vote of thanks to our outgoing mayor. Thank you.
Before I call upon Denise Legal, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and many congratulations to you. I wish you the very best in the year ahead. I don't plan to say, to add much to what has already been said, except that I had forgotten, completely forgotten about the event at the Hot Blossom pub. It was just quite interesting that the former leader and the now deputy leader of the Conservative Group do remember the pub, which I had completely forgotten, but I did distinctly remember that the mayor, our visiting mayor, and he became very animated in that pub and seemed to really enjoy himself. It's been an absolutely huge, huge privilege and honour to represent this wonderful borough. The highlights, I echo those that have already been said, of course, being both Canadian and British, the Canadian memorial was very special to me personally and is a day that I will never forget. I also very much enjoyed the remembrance services that we had across the borough, of which there were many of them, and I'm sure most councillors here will have attended one somewhere or another. And the other very special memory that I will have, which may seem like a small thing, but it was a concert, I forget what church it was, Penny, councillor Rivers will know which one, where Broadwater School sang an unbelievably beautiful version of A Holy Night, which happens to be my favourite Christmas carol, so that one is etched in forever. And I just wish to thank a few people in particular. One, of course, is my consort Polly, which I have a very small token of appreciation for you, so would you please give me a round of applause for Polly? The next person I want to say thank you to, and oh, councillor Martin, you have no idea how many times I actually did get lost in the past year, but I want to thank someone who did help me not get lost by contributing all the sat nav codes in good order and who has helped me with the diary and everything else, which I couldn't have managed without her help, and that's Alison. Alison, where are you? I do have a small thing for you. Alison, by the way. I would also like to thank the leadership from Julia Potts, who supported me very well in my mayoral year, and all other councillors who put up with my style of mayoring and of conduct in this chamber. It's been a great fun, it's a huge privilege, and I hope you enjoy it as much as I did. Finally, to the chief executive. I think we have a wonderful chief executive of Waverley. He has been changing the culture across Waverley and I hope you continue to do so. The going may get tough sometimes, well, we know the going gets tough sometimes, and so I just thought I'd give you a tiny thing to help you through those difficult times. Now, you need to know that this is recycled and I don't think it contains any plastic. And so when you need to find a way to express something in a way that you may not have a way of doing it, it's a game of charades. So, thank you so much. So again, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, all the wonderful volunteers and the public of Waverley, thank you very much for having given me the privilege and the honour to serve as your mayor for the past year. Thank you.
We're nearly there. Item number seven, and that's the minutes of the meeting. Can I confirm the minutes of the council meeting, which took place on the 19th of March? Is it agreed?
Agreed.
I'll sign these later. Item number eight is my announcements. I don't have too many at the moment because it's still very much a work in progress, but I did want to talk about two charities of which, one is, two charities which I feel very passionately about, one of which is more about awareness, and the other is my passion for animal welfare and trying to connect the two. Gentlemen, do not be embarrassed by this, please. Talking about it doesn't make you weak, it makes you a genius. What I would like to focus awareness on in my mayoral year is male suicide. Male suicide is the biggest killer of men under the age of 50. Too many young men are dying and I think we need to do something about it. So my campaign this year will be to bring awareness to male suicide and to see what we can do to encourage men to talk more, more openly about the problems that they're having. Because you guys, you are really not very good expressing your opinions, you're not very good expressing how you feel or your emotions, so the times need to change, so you can do that. As I said before, and I'll repeat it to you, remember these words, talking about it doesn't make you weak, it makes you a genius. The other one where I'd like to complement it with is, many of you know I have a massive empathy and passion for animal welfare, I spend a lot of time working, training animals, dogs in particular, and we've only just scratched the surface of the ability of where our animals can help us connect. And I'm looking for a home-based charity, more local to the Waverley area, that will help in animal therapy. These animals are simply amazing. I had a student come to me through Surrey County Council Employability Scheme some years ago, who was a young lad who was autistic, and he married up very nicely to one of my working dogs, which is a little Norwegian Alcound. He was with me supposedly for five weeks, he was there for five years, he now has his own little dog walking business in the north of England, and that's the connection and the confidence that our animals can give. And sometimes, it's not about appeal, it's not about anything, it's about just having that connection with something and someone that's not going to judge you. But as I say, it's a work in progress and they're the things that I'd like to concentrate on. So I'll be giving you more details as time goes on, but the one thing that I will be doing on is trying to raise awareness and raising money as well for those causes. And there's a few people in the audience who will recognise, Elizabeth Ashcroft, you're one of them, Julie Bosker, you're another one of them. I'm famous for Dog X Factor and The Great British Bake Off, and this year we intend to do it all over again, it's going to be a reunion, and we're going to hopefully hold it over at the Godwin Park over there. So Jackie Keane as well, you mentioned you can bake, so I'd start baking, and it's a bit of a fun day out to raise awareness and bring the two together for the charities that I have in mind. And I will bring you up to date as and when, I've got engagement starting tomorrow, and I will bring you up to date and keep you informed. I would like to also try something else by maybe having a regular blog, so as you know exactly what the mayor's doing, where I'm going, what I'm doing, what connections I'm making, so you're aware of what's going on. That's all I have to say. One final thing on that, the one thing that I didn't mention before, which I'd like to mention now before I forget about, is again, congratulations to everybody, but I'd like to thank those retiring and outgoing members of this council who served the council so well for so long, for so many years. So that's all I have to say under mayor's announcement. Going to item number nine, I would like to, election of leader. Can I call for nominations for leader of the council for the period of 2019 to 2023? Councillor Beaman.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Before making the nomination, I would also like to send my personal congratulations to you, Madam Mayor, and the deputy mayor, and my best wishes to outgoing mayor Denise Legal, and also all those retiring councillors who didn't come back this time. My nomination for our leader is councillor John Ward. And I'd like to say a few words in support of my nomination. Why does anyone become a councillor? In John Ward's case, it was a conversation in a public house, in which he was bemoaning the state of local services when he was asked why he didn't do something about it. So he did, and he was elected as a councillor. For John, being a councillor means doing the right thing and not being regarded as can for by any administration. John moved to Farnham 20 years ago with his wife Gillian, having spent a career which started in the mining industry, where he got his hands dirty, and then working in the oil industry, holding management positions in Indonesia and Libya. His management career taught him the qualities and skills required for effective leadership. He is fair, focused, decisive and extremely well organised. John does not errust or fool gladly and will act rather than pontificate. With John, things get done. These are the qualities that will be required as we all find our way in the new administration, working together with councillors of other parties for the good of Waverley. These are the qualities that led last week to Farnham resident councillors voting to give full support to John as their leader. These are the qualities which make John Ward a good leader of the council. Apart from the qualities and skills needed to be leader, John has also extensive experience. He's been a town and borough councillor since 2007, during which time he's been mayor of Farnham twice. Here at Waverley, he was chair and vice chair of Western and Southern Planning Committee for six years, and for the last two years he's been chair of Housing, Overview and Scouting Committee and the Overview and Scouting Coordinating Board. The electorate have voted and given great responsibility to Farnham residents and other parties to act together in a way that takes political dogma out of local decision-making. For Waverley, John Ward is able to lead the council through what are likely to be very difficult times ahead. Outside of politics, John has a passion for playing on a teaching bridge in which he can escape into another world before coming back to face the challenges ahead. It is therefore with great pleasure that I propose John Ward to be leader of the council for the coming year.
Councillor Follows, I presume.
Madam Mayor, may I first of all offer my congratulations on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group and also to our new deputy mayor. Thank you very much. I've only known John Ward for about two years, as I've known some of you in this chamber for only about two years, and of course started tucked away in a corner as a sort of honorary member of what we just about called the opposition as of about three weeks ago. I'm not going to speak very long tonight because I think it's quite likely that you'll And I'm not going to speak very long tonight because I think it's quite likely that you'll hear a little bit more of me and John than some of you might have expected three weeks ago. So, it is my great pleasure to support the nomination of councillor John Ward as leader of the Borough Council for this coming year.
Thank you, councillor Follows. Are there any other nominations? If that's agreed, I hereby announce councillor John Ward, leader of the council for the period 2019 to 2023. Councillor Ward, I understand you was to say a few words.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I barely recognised myself in councillor Beaman's speech. And for those of you who think I'm organised, you haven't seen my study. However, may I congratulate you, madam mayor, on being elected as our new mayor. I've always been impressed by your fairness, your openness, your reasonableness, but also your determination. So, I'm delighted to see you sitting in that chair, and I'm delighted that you will be our mayor in what could be some very difficult and hard times for us all. I'm naturally very pleased to have been elected leader of the council, and I shall do my very best to justify the faith this council has put in me. I shall try not to speak too long, as it is the new mayor's day, but there are certain pieces of business that need to be done. As we're all well aware, there's been a seismic shift, and I speak as a geophysicist, in voting patterns as exhibited in the recent election. We are all, the established parties, the newer parties, the officers, and the people outside, we are actually rowing in waters we didn't think we'd be in, and we'll have to see how we can get on with it. But this is new territory for us all, and I just hope that we can all learn to live with it and find out how it goes. The Farnham residents and Liberal Democrats have come together to form an administration. And although we will clearly seek to make a number of changes, there is no mad rush, and we do not wish to do things other than in a measured way so that there will be no huge disruptions to council, but we certainly wish to change the course of some things. We will be remodelling the way the council works to bring in a more collaborative form of government, moving towards a committee-oriented, but not necessarily a committee type of structure. As a first step on that path, we have offered places on the executive to the other parties, intending to make it an assembly of all the talents. The proposed new committee membership is also on your order papers, as you've already seen, and will be moved at a later date, but you will also see that all parties are represented in positions of authority. At this point, may I thank the last Conservative administration for the professional, friendly, and constructive way that they have participated in what must have been for them a very difficult handover. I am appointing eight members to the new executive. The deputy leader will be councillor Paul Follows from the Liberal Democrats. I am pleased also to confirm that I appoint councillor Andy MacLeod, councillor David Beaman, and councillor John Neal from the Farnham residents of members of the council's executive committee. With their particular aptitudes and experiences of company management, transport, planning, and IT, as well as working with the disabled and the less fortunate in our society, they will bring an excellent breadth of talents to the executive. I will confirm the final details of all the portfolio holders' responsibilities in due course. I also appoint a further four councillors to the executive committee, but with your indulgence, madam mayor, and in the new spirit of cooperation, I would like to invite councillor Follows as deputy leader to speak on those appointments.
Thank you, madam mayor, and may I be the first to offer congratulations to the new leader of the council? I'll be brief to also address the business. From the Liberal Democrat Group, I am pleased to confirm councillor Mark Meriwether and councillor Anne-Marie Rosman to be appointed to the executive by the leader of the council. And in the spirit of our ongoing collaboration, I'm also pleased to confirm that councillor Steve Williams of the Green Group and councillor Nick Palmer of the Labour Group have also been appointed by the leader to the council's executive committee. Thank you very much, and we hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations, councillor Ward. Well deserved. Look forward to working with you. And can I just thank you as well, leader, for making us aware of some of the appointments to the executive committee beforehand? It's made it very helpful and clear. Thank you. Do we, councillors, having heard all that, is that agreed? Item number 10, and that's the appointments of committee. And there's one late change I'd like to bring your attention to, and that's on page eight of your tabled papers for this item, and it's for the Environment ONS Committee. Councillor Jenny Elts is now nominated in place of councillor Kevin Deeney. Is that agreed? Councillors, if we go back to item number 10, the report setting out the political proportionality of the new council has been tabled before you, along with the annex showing the group leaders' nomination for appointments to committees. There are three recommendations, and I would ask that we take them on block, to note the proportional allocation of seats on the council's committees, and to agree the nominations to council committee seats and to the appeals panel and to the Surrey County Council Local Committee. You'll see the recommendations on page five of your agenda. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Members, wow. I now declare this meeting closed. Please, may I invite my guests to join me in the Borough Hall for some light refreshments and a little bit of a celebration with some music? Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please remain in the chamber for a few minutes until the mayor is ready to receive you in the Borough Hall, and please ensure you take all your personal belongings with you. Thank you.